I will call the Riverside Township Board of Trustees to order. Please rise and trustee, okay, wow, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Dropka, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Blough.
Present and accounted for.
Trustee Carroll.
Present and accounted for.
Trustee Clark.
Present.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Present.
Supervisor Will.
Here.
Let the record note, show that Clerk Dropka is in attendance and we have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, we have the minutes of the March 9th meeting of the Board of Township Trustees. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from the March 9th, 2022 meeting.
I have a, I have a motion by trustee Blough, seconded by trustee Carroll, to accept the minutes of the March 9th, 2022 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections, or is there any discussion on these minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Next up is the communications. Are there any communications?
Yes, I have two communications this evening. I have a thank you note from Aging Care Connections thanking the Riverside Township Board of Trustees for awarding Aging Care Connections a grant for their programming. And then I also have a letter from Access to Care thanking them for, to Riverside Township Board of Trustees, thanking us for awarding them a grant for their programming.
Thank you very much. Those don't call for any action, so we will go on to public comments. Is there anyone who isn't otherwise on the agenda who has anything to bring before the township board?
I'll just give everyone a brief overview of what's happening in the assessor's office. My name is Fran Setkowitz, and I am the township assessor. So we're kind of in a waiting pattern right now, waiting for the appeal period to start for the 2022 tax year. We're very behind schedule. We're waiting for the board of review decisions from appeals that went in last December, and those we're not expecting to be mailed until probably mid-May, and which means the assessor's appeal period will not begin until probably June at the earliest. Everything is very delayed. You might be seeing in the news, there's a big blame game going on, but it just, whoever's at fault, the tax bills will most likely not be mailed any earlier than November 1st. So it's going to be an interesting year, to say the least. So we kind of don't know what to expect as to what the calendar, rest of the calendar year will look like, certainly not anything that we're used to having upstairs, but we'll work it out, and we'll make sure that everyone gets a chance to get their appeals in. A lot of changes with the, with this new transition going on in the Cook County Assessor's Office with their IT department, so, no, we're just kind of going along and taking it, taking it one day at a time. We don't get a whole lot of information from the Cook County Assessor's Office ahead of time, so we're pretty much on a catch-as-catch-can basis. That's pretty much what's going on right now. Any questions?
Thank you, Madam Assessor.
You're welcome.
Okay, trustees, trustee Blough, any, any reports?
No report, thank you.
Trustee Carroll?
No reports for me.
Trustee Clark?
Uh, yes, I was just, well, no, the exercise class is going very well, which is said, sometimes they have up to 30 people in it, which is great. I attended Lobby Day on April 6th, and one of the main things that came out of Lobby Day is our competitive bidding. We used to have to go out for competitive bids if it was over $20,000, and they had raised that to $30,000. That bill has passed both houses and is now waiting for the governor to sign it. Then at our luncheon, the Speaker of the House, Chris Welsh, was our speaker, and he indicated as long as he was in charge that townships were safe, and there would be no bills trying to eliminate them. And they also, it was hard to meet with our legislators because it was like second to the last day of session, and they had just approved the House budget, so what they, TOI would like us to do is to, when they come back to their home offices, is to kind of introduce ourselves, go over and introduce ourselves, and let them know we're here if they have any questions about township or township services. The next educational program is in Rockford on May 26th, from 8:00 to 3:00, and that will be, you know, supervisors, clerks, trustees, and assessors, we're there for a general meeting, and then we break out into individual divisions. And the annual state meeting will be next November, and that will be an in-person meeting at the Crown Plaza in Springfield. And that is all I have in my report.
Thank you very much. Trustee Highlandbach?
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Mental Health Board at our last meeting approved our budget for the 21-22 fiscal year. We also approved our-
22-23.
Thank you, 22-23. We also approved our meeting dates, which you will both find in your packets. The Community Resource Center is working on a health fair for June. By the next meeting, I should have a date and a time. I know that I have looked at numerous things that they're going to do. They also have reserved a table at the farmer's market to do some outreach, and they continue to do the outreach. The newsletter that was sent out, the last quarterly newsletter, has had an influx, or a little bit more of a call volume, to our Community Resource Center, so it's obviously working very well. That's all I have for my report.
Thank you very much. Okay. Forward. Unfinished business. We have on the agenda proposals for the town hall security cameras, and you have in your packet a proposal from another organization than we heard from last month, so. Would you like to present, let us, give us a summary of what's going on, or Andrew, if you want to speak to it?
That's up there.
Yes, yes, please. Just identify yourself by numbers.
Yeah, sure. Good afternoon, or good evening. Paul Griffin-Stett with Griffin Systems. We're a security integrator of 18 years. We basically worked with Andrew to propose a design to cover the inside and outside of the village hall, and you have maps within the proposal, as well as camera locations, and any questions that you might have on that.
So can you give us like, just an overview of what this, how the system would work for us?
Sure, sure. So basically, we're looking to cover any interaction with the public inside and outside the building for security and safety. The cameras are wired back to a computer closet, and then they're put on the Internet for access for people that will have access to it, whether they want to use their phone or their computer. We save the video for 30 days. It's saved locally, so it's not in the cloud, but you have the ability to access the system from anywhere.
Okay, so this would be a server-based system as opposed to a cloud-based system?
It is. It's sort of a hybrid because it uses the cloud to serve the video to your phone or to your, you know, computer at home based on your login credentials, so.
Okay, and it's my understanding that we could share that data with anybody, with law enforcement or whoever we choose to?
You can, and Riverside Police uses the same system, so they're well-versed in the system, and sharing video with the police is very easy.
And this total cost is out the door?
Yes.
Do you anticipate any other?
The cost is what it is, yes.
Okay, very good. Questions?
So we, so we, the township, would be in control of the actual video?
Yes.
Because it would be on the server?
Yes. Yeah, everything is on its own, let's say, camera network, and then you control the data, as well as the, the cameras are physically here, and the server is physically here in the building, too.
What kind of a lifespan do you anticipate for a server like that?
So it's five years for a warranty, but we've been in business for 17, almost 18 years this year. Most of the systems are running in that sort of 10 to 15-year, especially most of the cameras are indoor. You know, we, we have clients like Ozingo where it's a very, you know, dirty sort of construction-type environment, where those might be more on the five to six years, but with you guys, it's, you know, it's inside cameras majority. 16 of the 18 cameras are inside, so I would expect at least 10 years, if not longer, for that.
I didn't see on the map, where is the two outside? It's going to be on the front door, I assume?
Front door, and then for the parking lot on the side. And the, and the system is expandable. It's not like you only get 18 and you can't do anything else. You can add cameras, you know, if you, let's say you want to add one, another one to the parking lot, or one to the back, or stairway or something, the, the system is very expandable.
And there's no yearly fee for this?
There is not, no. It's not like an alarm system or a cloud-based system that you have to keep paying for it to work. You own the system, you own the cameras, you own the server. After the first year, after the first, well, within the first year, we come and if anything breaks, we fix it, obviously, and then five years' worth of warranty, so if the camera breaks within the five-year warranty, we come out and replace it for free, so there's no annual or sort of alarm-type charge per year.
So it's a five-year basically warranty, am I correct?
For hardware, yes.
For hardware?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
This is substantially less than the other-
Yes, it is.
And we don't have to pay that fee?
Right.
The cloud fee.
Right.
And you don't have to find witnesses to testify. He's a right here.
Yeah, that's true.
That whole thing back and forth we had with that last, I don't think he was understanding what I'm saying.
Right.
But if we have it, we, we can testify.
Right.
If we need it. Is this camera working? Yeah, it's working. We check it every day, our security guy.
Right.
And they use it next door, so we can ask the chief what he-
Well, that, we did, we had-
We met with the chief about it, yeah, and they've been very happy with this program. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to re-approve the camera system that was provided by Griffin Systems, Inc.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion by trustee Highlandbach, seconded by trustee Carroll, to approve the purchase of the camera security system with Griffin Systems. Any discussion? Then Clerk Dropka, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Blough.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Will.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. All right, next is, you have a proposal for changes to the rental schedule, the schedule of fees. There's some slight modifications of the rules, just clarifications more than anything. And we've discussed this a little bit before. Where, where am I missing it? I have it in the back of something, right? There. There we go. Are there any questions, or I will entertain a motion if you feel that this is acceptable?
Has there ever been a case where people have snuck in alcohol and not provided the in-
Not that we're aware of. We usually have somebody who comes around and checks when we have an event, but most of the time, you know, we don't have, we haven't had that much in the last two years, realize, and before that, we aren't not aware of any of it. We, if we had any fears that that might happen, you know, if the party was bigger, or the crowd seemed like, really, you're not going to have any drinks here, we would check, and we haven't had, we're not aware of anything like that. We actually, we had one request come in today for a party this month, and we said, no, it's not on the agenda, we can't approve it. It was like, I, you know, and it was just kind of last minute, and they really didn't know what they wanted. They were like all over the place yet, so we said, you know, we can't guarantee it. They had not even asked for the room in advance, and then said, you know, oh, this is going to happen. But otherwise, we have a couple of rentals on the agenda today. But we do ask that people communicate with plenty of time, especially in a case like that, so that the board can make those decisions. Either the custodian or I have generally been here to open up, and we can see what's coming in the door and so forth, so.
I make a motion to accept the Riverside Town Hall policy and procedures for meetings, special events, and facility rental.
Thank you, I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
A motion by trustee Blough, seconded by trustee Highlandbach, to approve the Riverside Town Hall policies and procedures, meetings, special events, and facility rental agreement. Do you want to put in an effective date, since we do have some things lined up, or do you want to waive the change in fees to anybody who's already been booked and locked in?
I would say waive it for the people that are already locked in.
And otherwise effective immediately?
Effective immediately.
Yes, I agree.
After, you know, like those people are-
Right.
Okay, so this would be effective as of tomorrow, then?
Yes.
Except for anybody that we've already made a commitment to?
Made a commitment to, yes.
Very good. Any other discussion? Then there are financial matters involved here, so Clerk Dropka, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Blough.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Will.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, next item is the discussion of the township budget. I provided another copy. We will schedule before next month's meeting, since there was plenty on the agenda today. We will schedule a hearing on this. This, I'm pretty sure, you can see some slightly highlighted when it was copied, the yellow didn't necessarily pop up heavily, but you can see where there were some areas where I might have changed, based on both experience of what has come in and based on what we did expend, so there were a few adjustments. And if there's any changes to this before the hearing, I will certainly distribute that, but I think, I'm pretty confident that we're, that this is the budget I propose. Are there any questions? Hearing none, then we'll just move along, because that will come up for a vote at the next board meeting. Swinging bridge repairs, I will simply report that the architect and I have a virtual interview tomorrow with the Cook County Grant Team regarding the investing Cook grant for the bridge that I applied for. I did ask for a rather large amount. In most cases, they look for matching funds from the applicant, but there are some exceptions, especially in the case of economically challenged areas, and although you wouldn't think it, we have a portion south of the bridge that is in the, that does qualify in that level of, of funding, and also they, their application and their description of the grant did describe that they wanted to know, it focuses a lot on transportation and connectivity to rail, and that serves, you know, that bridge serves for a lot of people to get to the Riverside train stations and such. So, you know, I'm pulling everything that I can on that. I have no idea how the interview will go, or what they'll come up with. At this point, I, as I indicated in my report to the annual meeting, it's very possible that the, that only, that one large bid was placed that high so that, you know, they don't have to take it, you know? It's like, if, if somebody's willing to pay that, they'll go. We may, we'll, we'll discuss at a future meeting, I think, whether we want to go for another series of bids, or, Mr. Hayes, do you think that there would be a way of extending that emergency situation?
I think you could, it might be worth revoting, or make, taking the same vote again, just because it was about a year ago, I think. You took the last one, and-
Right.
I don't think that has an end date, but it doesn't hurt to vote again, as the circumstances of, if anything, time has only become more of the essence, I guess, right?
Right.
In the intervening years.
Well, and that was the reason, right, for voting, for taking that vote at that time, to avoid, you know, open bidding, because that didn't seem to be effective in this case.
So I think it would qualify to, you know, take that vote, to waive bidding, if you wanted to go that direction. You've certainly tried a couple times already a year ago, and they didn't generate any bids, so.
All right.
It would qualify for that vote.
So would I get a motion to extend that emergency resolution?
Yeah.
Or should we draft one for next meeting?
I would, I would suggest put it on the agenda-
For next meeting.
For next meeting, if you're inclined to take action on, on that.
All right.
And we can work on the exact wording of it in the meantime.
Thank you. That's all I have to report regarding the bridge, other than, oh, no, in the, in the process of making application for a grant, I had to do some historical research. I, I don't know if all of you know, that the, the bridge was actually built by Cook County in 1940, and they turned over maintenance only when Stanley Avenue on the south side of the bridge was removed from the county highway system in 1959, and then they simply turned over the responsibility to the township. And also, we've talked about it, it's, the total rebuild in 2002 was roughly 230,000 at that time, so, for perspective of where we are today, to just quote it. And that's all I have on the bridge, then. Any questions?
Yeah, trustee Will, also at our meeting in Springfield, there is going to be some money given to the state. I believe it's leftover COVID money, and so townships will get some of that, and it's, but they still don't know anything yet, basically, on how it's going to be distributed. It was going to be the Department of Economic Development, but no, I think they're switching that.
Oh, really?
But TOI is very much on top of this, and as soon as they know how, you know, townships can access the money, they will let us know.
Okay, very good. Yes, Clerk Dropka also just notified me of that, that that was released as well, or that's being released, right? That's the same money we're talking about. All right, well, thank you, that, that's hopeful, too. Anything else? Then we'll move on to the new business, special event requests. We have a request for use of the building for a baby shower, and this would include alcohol, because of course you have to drink. So this would be for roughly 100 to 110 people, including food and liquor, tables and chairs are needed and so forth. This is for July 30th, and, so it's a ways away. They are well aware of the need for the insurance that we require, and so this is up for your approval. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion that we accept this request for the rental of the rooms for July 30th, as long as they provide the appropriate insurance.
Okay, I have a motion by trustee Clark. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Carroll, to approve the request for special use of the auditorium for July 30th for the, for Rocio Lord. Any discussion? I'm sorry, and including the compliance with the requirement for insurance. Hearing nothing else, what is your pleasure? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion is carried. And the other request is for a wedding, and that is for anticipated 150 people for October 30th, which is a Sunday, so it'll be a Sunday afternoon, and once again, same, same thing, there will be alcohol and food served, and therefore, it requires this board's approval. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to re-approve the October 30 wedding for 150 people, providing they provide us with the proper insurance documentation.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion by trustee Highlandbach, seconded by trustee Blough, to approve the request of Ross Doherty for an October 30th event for a wedding that would include food and alcohol, and so long as they provide the proper insurance. Andrew, I think you were out of the room when we agreed that the, the new rules take effect tomorrow, but we waive them for anybody we've already got committed. All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion is carried. Okay, and now on to, we have quite a list of, this is just a housekeeping thing, there were some, some expenditures that exceeded their budgetary lines, and there, there was money in the general budget related to those same things, so the budgetary transfers would come, let me see, they would come from salaries to hospital and life insurance in the amount of $2,242.18, from taxes unemployment to taxes FICA in the amount of $32.66, from maintenance of the building to utilities in the amount of $1,153.51, from town programs to food pantry in the amount of $2,161.91, from printing and publishing to office supplies in the amount of $622.57, from printing and publishing to operating supplies in the amount of $629.58, for, from legal services and to accounting services, both contractual services, in the amount of $1,391.22, and from the elections to dues in the amount of That means that the adjusted appropriations, as opposed to what the budget previously had, would be salaries, $287,485.82, taxes unemployment, $967.34, building maintenance, $23,846.49, town programs, the amount, $102,838.9, printing and publishing, $11,747.85, legal services, $18,608.78, elections, $88.35, hospital and life insurance, $20,242.18, taxes on FICA, $25,032.66, utilities, $8,153.51, food pantry, $12,161.91, office supplies, $6,622.57, operating supplies, $5,629.58, accounting services, $41,000. six hundred twenty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents, accounting services, forty-one thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-two cents, and dues, one thousand nine hundred eleven dollars and sixty-five cents. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to
Approve
Do the, approve the budgetary transfers of appropriation as set forth in the document in front of us
Okay.
Today, on April
Twelve.
Twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Trustee Blough, seconded by Trustee Carroll, to approve the budgetary transfer of appropriations as of the twelfth day of April two thousand twenty-two, as presented. Any discussion? This was all used in considering next year's budget as well. Then hearing nothing, Clerk Dropka, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Blough.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, next item is farmers' market vouchers for food pantry recipients. You see some sample vouchers to be used this year. The only question I would have, as I said, we stopped giving the, the gift cards. Vouchers are, we don't, we don't have to pay upfront, so we redeem them when they are needed. But I would perhaps recommend that we go from fifteen a month, fifteen dollars a month, to twenty dollars a month. So give them four vouchers, so they have basically one per weekly, per weekly farmers' market. And they can combine them, they get them all at once. What is your pleasure?
I agree with that. Let's move, you know, with the way inflation's going right now, food is a lot more
That's what I'm afraid of. The farmers' market is going to be quite expensive, I'm sure.
Right.
So I will entertain a motion to approve the participation in the Riverside Farmers' Market at the level of twenty dollars per month per food pantry recipient.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
A motion by Trustee Highlandbach, seconded by Trustee Carroll, to approve twenty dollars per food pantry recipient per month to, for vouchers to the farmers' market in Riverside. And this is a financial expenditure, so Clerk Dropka, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Blough.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right. Then the next item we have, basically, is consideration of salaries for which we would go into closed session.
Can we talk about the
What did I miss?
Roof project?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the roof project, I do have, yeah, I, thank you for reeling me back in. So the roof project, we, I do have architectural drawings for it now. If any of you would like a copy of them, I can email them to you, or we can print them out. It requires the large format paper, so that you can even read it, because it's very small. But then our next consideration will be, do we want to, when do we want to go out for bid on this? So I will be speaking with the architect tomorrow. I don't know if you're ready to have me, have him prepare bidding, or if we want to wait until we know more about what we can do with the bridge first?
I would recommend that. That's my recommendation, is that we wait to see what's going on with the bridge.
Any, any other discussion on that?
I just think that, you know, that bridge, who knows what it's going to cost. I know how much this is going to cost, so.
Had an off-the-cuff conversation with our attorney before this meeting. It would be nice if you could do something like you do with bath fitters, you know, where they just line the thing. Wouldn't it be nice if we could just encapsulate all of that with? I'll have to bring that up to the architect. Okay, so we, everybody agrees to defer that until after we figure out what's going on with the bridge? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, and I apologize for skipping over that accidentally. All right, so the next item would be the consideration of salaries for the coming year, and for that, we would go into closed session.
I make a motion to
Recede to
Recede to closed session, but for discussion of employees' salaries.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Trustee Blough, seconded by Trustee Carroll, to recess to closed session for the discussion of salary reviews for township employees. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion is carried. Then I will, I reconvene this open session of the Riverside Township Board of Trustees, and we have just adjourned our closed session, and would somebody like to make a motion on the action to be taken here?
I will make a motion to adopt the salary adjustments that were agreed to in closed session.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Effective May first, as part of that motion.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
No, no, I needed that writer on that one.
Right. And I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Trustee Carroll, seconded by Trustee Blough, to approve the salary adjustments effective May first, as agreed, or as recommended by the closed session. Any discussion? Then Clerk Dropka, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Blough.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we are up to the warrants.
Trustee Highlandbach, I move the board authorize and ratify the payment of the bills identified on the general warrant for April two thousand twenty-two in the amount of seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and five cents, as presented to the board this twelfth day of April two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Trustee Highlandbach, seconded by Trustee Carroll, to approve the general warrants in the amount of seventeen thousand two hundred twenty-eight dollars and five cents for April two thousand twenty-two. Is there any discussion, any questions? Then Clerk Dropka, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Blough.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Motion by Trustee Highlandbach, that the board ratify and authorize the payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. The utility warrant for April of two thousand twenty-two in the amount of three thousand three hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty-six cents, the payroll warrant for April of two thousand twenty-two in the amount of eighteen thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents, the health warrant in two thousand twenty-two in the amount of two thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents, the general assistance warrant for April of two thousand twenty-two in the amount of three thousand thirty dollars and ninety-three cents, the township radio play
Ninety-eight. Ninety-eight.
Did I miswrite it?
It could be, it could be the old guy's eyes.
It could be the
Corrected in the amount of three thousand thirty dollars and ninety-eight cents, the township radio players warrant for April of two thousand twenty-two in the amount of two hundred dollars, and the food pantry warrant for April of two thousand twenty-two in the amount of seven hundred sixty-five dollars and forty-four cents. All of the above as presented to the board this twelfth day of April two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Highlandbach, seconded by Trustee Clark, for the follow, to approve the following warrants for April two thousand twenty-two. Utility warrant in the amount of thirty-three hundred dollars sixty-six, I'm sorry, third, three thousand three hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty-six cents, the payroll warrant in the amount of eighteen thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents, the health warrant in the amount of two thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents, the general assistance warrant in the amount of three thousand thirty dollars and ninety-eight cents, township radio players warrant in the amount of two hundred dollars, and the food pantry warrant in the amount of seven hundred sixty-five dollars and forty-four cents. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Clerk Dropka, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Blough.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And that concludes the items on our agenda. What is your pleasure?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion by Trustee Clark.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Blough, to adjourn this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.